Good evening. I welcome you to the regular town council meeting of Town of Sunnyvale for December 9th. We appreciate you being here tonight. First item is invocation and going invite Sunnyvale Independent School District Board of Trustees, Kelly Thompson, come forward to lead us in your question.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us bow. Father, we come to you first and foremost acknowledging you as God's big sovereign role. Just giving you thanks for who you are and what you've allowed us to experience thus far. God, we thank you for this occasion tonight. Thank you for this town making the step to move forward. And as we do so, God, we ask you specifically to cover Chief Hawkes as he takes on this assignment. Thank you for his willingness to protect and serve. And we ask you to cover every single member of law enforcement and every person or partner representing God, not just here but everywhere in this country in the midst of everything that's going on. So, Father, we thank you. We look forward to this event. Father, we just give you glory for all that you've done and all that we're about to experience in Jesus. And we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Please join me standing before the podium. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. The time is seven o'clock. I'm going to record toward the regular town council meeting of Town of Sunnyvale for December 9th, 2019. For the Hooken, all council members accept Mr. Allen, up for sent. With the set six or seven members being present, we have a call. First, I'm going to have a ceremony swearing-in of Chief of Police Andrew Hawkes. Tonight is a special night as we will be swearing-in Sunnyvale's first-ever Chief of Police Andrew Hawkes. Hawkes started his tenure with Sunnyvale on October 1, 2019. However, we were not able to swear him in until we obtained our T-CO license to become an actual police department. We are proud to say that with his dedication and hard work, Andrew has achieved all the necessary steps and has accomplished obtaining such license. On behalf of myself and the council, we are proud to have Andrew leading the Sunnyvale Police Department. And now it will be an elite group with this gratitude. I would like to thank all the dignitaries present tonight for this monumental ceremony. And as I call your names, will you please come forward to be a part of this occasion? Dallas County Commissioner John White Price. Dallas Sheriff Marion Brown. State Representative Reda Bowers. Jennifer Olden, representing U.S. Representatives Lance Stewart. Rock Hall County Commissioner Cliff Sevier. And also, the town has a local celebrity. We have a local TV anchor, Shandra. And also, if I could have all the members of the police advise the committee to come forward, please. At this time, Town Secretary Rachel Ramsey will conduct the swearing-in. Can I ask Andrew Hawkes and his family to come forward for this word?
Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Andrew Hawkes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of office.
The duties of office.
As Chief of Police.
Of Chief of Police.
For the Town of Sunnyvale.
For the Town of Sunnyvale.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God. I just want to say thank you to all our dignitaries that came tonight. It's Commissioner Price, Lance Gooden's office, Jennifer for coming, old friend Cliff Sevier from Rockville County, and all my family. I really appreciate it. And we're just getting started, but we look forward to building a world-class, first-class, diverse law enforcement agency to represent Sunnyvale as a citizen of Dallas County. Thank you.
Yes. Let's take a 10-minute recess. That way, a family can take pictures.
And the dignitaries and you guys.
I'm sorry?
To the dignitaries and you guys.
Yes. Okay, now, time is 7:15. We are going to break and move into the regular session of the town council for December 9th. Council, I will take one item out of order. I'm going to go to item number G. That is recognition of TC Tar Luton Jr. At this time, we would like to take a moment as a council and the town to recognize and honor TC Luton, who passed away on November 12, 2019, at the age of 92. TC, known to most as Tar, has a pivotal figure in the history of Sunnyvale. He served on the first Sunnyvale Town Council in 1954. And for many years, served as Town Marshal, Fire Marshal, and Chief of the Volunteer Fire Department. He purchased and donated the first fire engine to the town in 1971. Mr. Luton also donated the land that the library is situated on and the building that the library is housed in to the town back in the 1980s. He also donated the funds to expand the library to its current size back in 1987. We are grateful for Mr. Luton and his dedication to Sunnyvale. Please join me in a moment of silence to honor Mr. TC Tar Luton. Thank you. Council, I'm going to get back to the item number E. That's announcements pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551, 1041, 5. The Mayor, Council, and Staff members report on the following items: Expression of thanks, congratulations, or condolences, information about voluntary disputes, recognition of individuals, reminders about upcoming town council events, information about community events, and announcements and warnings imminent through the public library. I have one item. I just want to thank all staff members who worked really, really hard to organize the Christmas celebration and the Christmas tree lighting. It was a phenomenal event. Lot of innovation, lot of spirit, and a lot of people came. Citizens came and enjoyed. Everyone I talked to are really grateful. So, thank you to each one of the staff and the different bodies for helping organize. Thank you. Mr. Ryan Finch.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo those same thoughts. Staff, you know, the rain, the turkey trot. I'm just going to say some more about that. We appreciate the time and the spend. That was a great first event for us, a new tradition. And so, we just really appreciate the staff. And also, the Christmas tree lighting was a phenomenal event as well. I've heard lots of comments. So, thanks to the staff for spending time on that and to the traditions we can continue from here. Thank you.
Mr. Fox?
So, we, as the mayor, the mayor brought it up and did mention, we had two great events. One was the turkey trot, which we had over 100 participants in. Participated in either running or walking. We had one mile and a 5K. And probably about 100, 125 people. So, it was great turnout on a really cold rainy day. Luckily, it stopped raining for about two hours so we could run and walk. So, thank you, staff. Also, we did have a fantastic tree lighting, which we had probably about 500 people come in it. And it included reindeer and gingerbread houses and lots of singing. And also, Santa Claus crashed the party as well. Really two great events. And we're excited to continue adding more events to our schedule and calendar. So, we have a meeting coming up on this Thursday. That's where we're, we have events coming, but we're still looking for people to come and join. So, if you have ideas or if you want to get involved, please get Susan, Rachel, or myself in now and we can get you involved. But we're looking forward to a great 2020 with continued events throughout the town. So, thank you very much. Thank you, staff. It was a great, both of us were fantastic. So, thank you all very much.
Any announcements from the council? Staff?
I just wanted to remind everyone that we have a special workshop on Wednesday night. The time did change to 7:00 PM. 6:30 for you all to show up and get situated. And then, the actual meeting will start at 7:00 PM. And the public is, of course, encouraged to attend. They have an opinion to express in regard to the Hillwood development, proposed development. So, again, 7:00 PM, Wednesday night.
Any other staff? Mr. Ramsey?
Just a reminder that the regular town council meeting for December 23rd is canceled.
Any other staff comments? Okay, now, I'm going to move on to the item number F, public forum. The town council. At this time, if anyone from the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council, please come forward. Okay, now, when it's coming forward, I'm going to close the public forum. Item number G, recognitions. We have two more items under the recognition. Item number two, recognition of the K-3 Sisters Band for hosting a fundraising concert for the Doris Page Public Library on November 2nd, 2019. Go across the back, one, don't hear.
Come on, Matthew.
Yes, sir.
Randy, would you come up? This, in glittery silver, is the K-3 Sisters who live here in Sunnyvale, lived here for a long time, been great supporters, not only of our community, but certainly of our public library. This is Jamie, their mother, and we're missing tonight their dad, Bruce, who is probably at home getting their next gig ready to go. They have many. While we're here tonight, all these young ladies along with mom and dad presented a benefit concert for the friends of the Sunnyvale Public Library for the benefit of Doris Page's Public Library. This is Matthew Coleman, our librarian, Randy Ferguson, and I forgot your name.
Joby Joseph.
Josie, Joby Joseph, yes, our member of our library board. This was held on November 2nd at the new Sunnyvale High School Performing Arts Center. If you haven't been there, you should go because it is fabulous. They put on a great concert. These girls have been performing for I don't know how long because Kristen was about this tall. She stood on steps in the front so everybody could see her. I remember that. They're famous right now because of TikTok. I think they've got something like four million hits on TikTok, which I don't even know what it is. Okay? It got on Good Morning America on ABC, and that's fabulous. They performed at Disneyland, Disney World, Universal Studios, Six Flags numerous times, locally at the Mill House Pizzeria, Oasis, and a couple places recently, the Tiger Powder Roast Festival, Mesquite Pumpkin Fest. And they love Granbury. I think that's a great place. I don't know if it's public or not, but you've got a concert coming up at the Dallas Zoo. Hope it's public?
Yes.
I look forward to that. So, we've got to recognize them tonight and say thank you for what you did for the for the Doris Page Public Library. A certificate of recognition. The Town of Sunnyvale awards this certificate to the K-3 Sisters Band in admiration of their talents and in recognition of the donation of their time and resources to the library fundraiser held on November 2nd, 2019. Thank you. It was overwhelming success, and we look forward to what the library is going to be done, going to do with the money that we raised that night. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're also going to recognize a new couple who brought their business to Sunnyvale and have already contributed mightily to the mechanical features of the library. But I understand they're not here tonight, so I'm going to hold this presentation to a later date. And we'll present this to them later. I'm going to get Matthew to hold on to it. He's more trusted than I am. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sevier. I think we already covered item number three of the agenda. Moving on to the consent agenda items. There are two items on the consent agenda. One needs to consider approval of the minutes of the meeting minute, meeting of the town council on November 11, 2019, and the approval of minutes for the meeting of the town council on November 14, 2019. Would I not like to remove any of the items from the consent agenda? If not, can I have a motion to approve consent at the item 5 and 6 as presented? Motion for you now. Motion made by Mr. Finch to approve item 5 and 6 as presented. Second. Second by Mr. Freeman. Everyone heard the motion? All in terms of five? All opposed? Motion passed, 60. Mr. Allen is silent. Moving on to the public hearing portion of the agenda. At number seven. This is to hold a public hearing to consider an act upon a request by the Heather Westford Baseline Corp to approve a re-plat for East Ford Estates at 1221 Picant Bridge Drive. Mr. Jackson?
Mayor, council. As noted, the applicant is a representative or representative for a residential property located at 621 East Concrete Drive. The subject area is 6.5 acres and is S.F. 1. The proposed subdivision will revise the eastern boundary of Lot 12, which is known as Lot 12 right now, by acquiring additional land from Track 24, which is Ms. Deborah Franklin's estate. Ms. Franklin intends to sell the lot once this revision is done for the development of a new home site. The subject lot will have access via the existing cul-de-sac at the end of the concrete. And upon review, it was discovered that a portion of the northern part of that existing cul-de-sac was actually not dedicated as right-of-way, so that will be done with this plat as well. A future extension, a dedication of the concrete drive will be extended to the east to provide adequate access to the lot. But it won't be constructed at this time. There is adequate right-of-way as it stands now with the cul-de-sac. With that noted, plans on commission recommend approval as submitted, and staff recommends approval.
Okay. I'm going to take public comments at this time. If anyone from the public would like to come and talk about this topic, please come forward. Now, when it's coming forward, I'm going to post the public hearing. Council, are there questions or discussions on this agenda item? Okay? If there are no discussions or comments, can I have a motion with respect to agenda item 7?
Motion approved, item 7 as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Finch to approve agenda item 7 as presented is the second.
Second?
Second by Mr. Croft. Everyone heard the motion? All in terms of five? All opposed to motion passed, 60. Moving on to item number eight. That is to hold a public hearing to consider an act upon a request by Terry Bedford and Jay Bedford to approve a re-plat for Long Creek Estates at 1221 Long Creek Court. Mr. Jackson?
Mayor, council. The applicant has made a request to replat this other property to create two S.F. 4 single-family lots. The property was originally platted as three lots with the initial development of Long Creek Estates. In 2013, the property was replatted into a single lot to assist with the development of an estate that did not come to be. So, the property owner would like to revise the plat again to provide opportunity to sell the two lots that will be created. There are several easements throughout the property, and the property owner is aware and noting that the future home will have to be developed around those easements. Staff recommends approval as submitted.
The public hearing items, I'm going to ask for public comments. If anyone from the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council, please come forward. Yes, sir? Good evening, sir. Would you, there's a form to be filled out by the outside, but when you're done here, I'd like to pick up and attend, I can see, Town Secretary, we appreciate it.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. On the, I got one of those forms in there.
Could you state your name and address?
Tracy Rodden, 401 Clay's Court, Sunnyvale. Own the lot that's kind of close to that, and then the lot right next to it. I was just curious to how it would be replatted. And then, also, on the letter I got, I know Chris owns the lot, but I got the requests from Terry and Jay Bedford.
Correct. The actual applicant is the one that we put on the front as the notice, and they're representing the property owner. So, they were the ones that were noted on the notice.
So, they're interested in buying it?
No, they are the engineers who drafted the application, and they're working on behalf of Mr. McNeil.
Could I just state your name and address?
My name's Paul Janasek. I live, I guess I'm Lot 10.
Yeah.
10.
And what would be the address?
Oh, 400 East Long Creek.
Thank you.
My main concern is, is if you split those lots up with all those easements running through there and the building lines, how are you going to get a house on that last lot?
So, if you would like to look at the replat, I have it for you.
If we go to the next slide, that shows it right there.
Yes, there it is.
How are you going to get a house that the size, the square footage is supposed to be? I mean, is it going to fit?
So, Mayor and council, the question is from Mr. Janasek. How you, how a house is going to go on to one of the lots? It will have to meet all of the zoning requirements for the property. And so, that's up to the purchaser, how they want to, how they want to design the residence.
It will have, it will have to be probably a uniquely designed home.
Yeah.
And keep in mind, though, the square footage is, can go vertical or it can do a two-story home to meet.
Right.
So, I see it as a possibility if they go two-story. But it would be a uniquely designed home. And also, keep in mind, this used to be three lots when it was first developed.
Yeah, I don't understand how it was ever three lots.
Okay. So, you'll need to speak into the microphone if you want to.
No, I mean, as long as, you know, you're telling me that it's going to.
So, if you can speak to the mic, that also the town can hear also.
As long as you're telling me it's going to meet all the requirements that are in our covenants, and we're not going to change any building lines or anything else, then I guess I'm okay with it.
Yes.
So, no building lines will change on that?
What's shown on the plat will be. So, the setbacks meet the current regulations for S.F. 4 zoning, which that's the same zone that you're in. If there are any requests to vary from those standards, they'll have to come back before the town and go get a variance. But the likelihood of that would be possibly difficult because you have to have a hardship.
Right. See, I know about, I've already tried that.
Okay. Thank you. If you could fill out the form for me, please.
They're right, they're right outside on the table, right outside the door. Thank you so much.
Are there any other comments from the audience? Okay, now, when it's coming forward, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm going to turn this over to the council. Council, what questions or discussions you have on this topic? So, just three lot? The opposite is one lot, now they want four.
Yes. That's two.
Two lots, huh?
Two.
Wasn't it three lots? Wasn't there another, didn't they go all the way to the Larkin Road? And it was three lots?
That, that subject area was divided.
Sorry, when it was three, sorry, when it was three, that was one lot, right? All the way to Larkin Road?
No.
No. Okay.
No, that lot is at the median corner of Larkin and Long Creek. It's separate from this proposal.
So, what we're looking at now at one time was three lots?
Yes.
Okay. Rashad, is this already zoned, S.F. 4?
Yes.
So, the 14 and 15 are the proposed divisions?
Yes. Those are even the lots.
Council, are there additional discussions on this topic?
Mayor, just for the record.
Yes, sir.
The concern of the right is this is going to be up to buyer of this property, which is up to the seller of the property, to figure out how to put a house on here. That's not our assignment. That's their assignment. And to that end, they have to follow our regulations. And while it may appear to be difficult, that's not our assignment. That is going to be up to the. That is gonna be up to the, the buyer, who's gonna buy it from the owner of the property. And as I understand it, the three lots were not successful, so we're gonna try two.
Three was not successful, so they went to one, now they come back to two, right? Just three first, they combined with the one and now they come back to two. So, Rashad, I might understand this picture. So, it's, it's kind of the one between the dotted line, the middle horizontal line is that the, the lot?
Correct.
Lines separate?
The, the, the lot, the line that's directly in the middle, that's sub-lotting the property evenly, is the property line. And you have the other dash lines, which are the setback lines. And keep in mind, this is a plat that is adhering to our town code, um, so there's not necessarily, um, like Mr. Way said, anything that would prevent approval. There is concerns that are noted as far as development, but it can be done, I believe so. Um, if not, it just remain vacant.
Okay, counsel, are there additional discussions or comments on this topic? If there are none, can I have a motion with respect to agenda item eight?
Motion approved, agenda item eight as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Finch to approve item number eight as presented is the second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Freeman. Everyone heard the motion? All, all in terms of five? All opposed, the motion passed six. Moving on to item number nine. Let us to hold a public hearing to consider and act upon a request by the town assembly to approve the first reading of ordinance nineteen dash thirty-two and ordinance amending the town unified development ordinance newly passed by the town council on March twenty-six, twenty eighteen, as amended from time to time, so as to review and amend. Section three point oh six, oh six, parking standards revised, non-residential and residential aim with ordinance, as well as any other associated sections.
Mayor, I'm gonna interrupt for just a moment.
Yes, sir.
Do you recognize that State Rep. Rita Bowers has come to our meeting? I think we should acknowledge that.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers.
Sorry, you missed the presentation earlier. He's still here, you can get a picture with him.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers.
Sorry, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Come, Mr.? Mr. Jackson?
Mayor, Council, uh, direction was provided to staff to prepare a, an amendment to, uh, parking surface standards. Um, the intent of the amendment is to further clarify our current paving requirements for single-family and non-residential development. Um, and we've also included additional emergency vehicle regulations for mass assembly venues. Um, at this time, the town requires concrete for most all parking surfaces. Over time, residents and commercial developers have requested variations from this requirement, which we've kind of, uh, done in, in a way to allow them to make these requests during the site plan application process. The proposed amendment would simply clarify, simply clarify that supplemental materials allowed for such variation requests and put that process in the UDO as an official process. Um, the proposed amendments also create, uh, more clear regulations for non-residential requirements, and residential requirements. As I noted, emergency vehicle standby parking, we really don't have anything specifically noted in the UDO at this time for that. Um, direction was provided to look into that. Uh, at this time, um, we would like to add this requirement to assure that access is provided for these mass assembly venues whenever you have our certified emergency vehicles. Rather than them sitting on grass or not having a direct path to the facility, this will put that regulation in place to where it redesign accordingly. Plan Zonal Commission review the application and, uh, recommend approval and staff recommends approval.
This is a public hearing agenda item, so I'm going to ask for public comments. If anyone from the audience would like to come forward and talk about this agenda item, uh, please come forward. Now, when it's coming forward, so I'm going to post the public hearing. Counsel, are there any questions or discussions on this agenda item?
Mayor, I have some questions and comments. I may have missed some of the previous discussion. I don't recall some of these items being directed to staff that ended up in this final ordinance, or, uh, yes, ordinance. But I have several questions. So, we've, we've continued with the paragraph with regards to residential zoned lots that are two acres in larger. And we have added and parking spaces, which is fine, but beyond a fifty-foot dr, beyond a fifty-foot distance, we provided some alternatives and those are in our current code. And I recognize this is sort of our current code. For some reason, struck negatively by fifty-foot distance is sixteen point two-three yards, which is not very far, but it's probably the distance from he, from here to maybe, uh, Councilor McNeil out there. So, in a two-acre lot, they can lay concrete from here to there, but after that, they got all kinds of options, correct?
Those that are noted here, yes.
But if I'm on a residential zone lot less than two acres, I don't have any alternatives except concrete.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes, that is what was approved back in twenty seventeen when we did the UDO.
Well, you know, that strikes me a little bit negatively because I live on a big lot and I still got a big driveway. I just gotta lay a little concrete from here to there, sixteen yards, and then I can do anything I want to. But if I've got a one and three-quarter acre lots, I got concrete to hold them in driveway and any parking spaces that might be adjoining it and any outflows from that and so forth. So, I don't know that I agree with that. In fact, I don't agree with it. So, this may have been approved back in twenty seventeen and very likely I have to prove that, but strikes me now kind of odd. So, I'm going to recommend that that fifty feet on a two-acre lot maybe be changed to the front building line so we can get it a little further away from the street and at least somewhat the same distance that might be applicable to a residential lot less than two acres. Now, that connect the parking space to the town right away. I'm gonna use my lot as an example, and I'm not fixing to do anything, so don't worry, but it's an example. Cause I've got an acre and a third and I've got probably a, a fifty-foot driveway and it's concrete. But my gate going into my backyard is right there at my driveway. If I read this correctly, because it might connect to my driveway, if I go out into my backyard to my shed or park my trailer, which by the way, I don't have anymore, I gotta have concrete for that. That's behind a privacy fence. That could be all the way, excuse me, that could be all the way to the back fence, which is a hundred and eighty feet. I don't require that on a larger lot, so why should I require it on a smaller lot? So, I, I really got some exceptions to that.
I wouldn't know.
I just don't want to discriminate against somebody who has a smaller lot to have to lay yards and yards and yards of concrete that his neighbor who has two acres doesn't have to do.
I understand that and the consideration when this was drafted, like in twenty seventeen was when you're considering those lots that were less than two acres, you're considering your home assoc, uh, your, your developments that are probably regulated by homeowners associations that require that concrete anyway. Um, and in many cases, uh, those lots that are larger than two acres are already in, in our community have crushed rock or, or some other material. So, if they didn't want to burden them with a new regulation whenever they were going to revise or maintain what they already had. So, you're talking Stony Creek, the Homestead, those developments. We've already had regulations in place that if you did put something behind your fence with our bill line, um, one of the concerns the council had was those vehicles or trailers or whatnot, they need to be on concrete. They didn't want, y'all didn't want those parked on grass. Now, that was part of the reasoning for the way this was drafted.
I mean, if the alternative to concrete is compacted gravel, asphalt, interlocking concrete, cellular reinforced concrete, there's lots of options to concrete.
Yeah, if y'all want to expand this, this is all the lots, that's, that's...
You know, it just seems like, and then, you know, I know HOAs have their own regulations, but there's lots of homes in Sunnyvale that are not in HOAs. And those can be grandfathered, should they be necess, be necessary. You can't go out and make them do something now. And you've got lots of gravel lots, you've got lots of asphalt, just go up down trip road and see that. So, I'm just real concerned about the fact that we're not requiring larger lots, concrete or driveway, except maybe from here to there. But yet we're requiring smaller lots to, regardless of the size, and even slightly under two acres, have all concrete. And if they expanded, it's all concrete. Seems a little bit of a burden, unfortunate burden and probably unnecessary, in my opinion. Uh, I have another comment with regards to, my page twenty-seven, I think it's page six in your ordinance. Is two, three, and four that are noted on page six. Those are indicated to be paving requirements, does those only apply to non-residential lots? Cause we don't strip fire, like fire lanes in residential areas.
Yes, that's in the non-residential section.
Okay, so that needs to be re, uh, relabeled because it seems to be...
Oh, it's under C, non-residential lots.
C is intended. So, are you saying that that's still under C?
Yes.
Okay, it looks like it's in the paving requirements to me. Cause if you notice, it's in the first indentation. Make it clear, okay. So, that's a comment that I have. I think it ought to be re-looked at. Also, in B, twelve B, all commercial, particular store, parking property overnight should be located inside an enclosed building screen from view on TC Leighton Clay. We just approved trucking facility on Clay Road that potentially has overnight parking. It will not have enclosed buildings. Uh, I'm sure you know what I'm talking about.
I didn't hear exactly where you were looking at.
Uh, twelve B, TC Leighton Clay Road, Carter. We just approved the trucking facility on Clay Road that's gonna park trucks overnight and possibly even longer, twenty-four hours, which apparently is not allowed either.
Was there screening for that category? Was there any screening?
Uh, it didn't talk about screening. It says it gotta be located inside an enclosed building.
Or?
Or screened from view.
Keep in mind, I guess we, that PD that property are talking about is off into the industrial park.
Into what?
It's in the industrial park. It's not along the corridor. Um, and it is a PD, so they have the right to have variations from the regulations.
But screened from view, that view from TC Leighton or Clay Road, you're gonna be able to see them, cause you see them now.
Right, I, I understand.
So, for view is, they're not screened. They're certainly not enclosed.
I will note, you're kind of expanding the proposed amendment here. That wasn't necessarily something that was a part of this amendment. We can add or revise and look at it, and test it is.
Probably good that we look at the whole ordinance that we're gonna...
So, your recommendation is to, on the twelve device or...
I'm concerned because, uh, you know, if you go down Clay Road, you don't just see the new trucking facility, you can also see other trucks. FedEx is there, lineage is there. Screened from view, if you can see them, they're not screened from view.
Correct.
Why would you put that in there?
A lot of those properties have been in place a lot earlier than this regulation, so, uh...
Okay.
So, if you'd like, we can, um, take, table this item for this meeting and then come, come address your issues, have a conversation with you and then bring it back to the council. I mean, I think there are a couple of things we could edit on the fly, but I think this last item, I think bears some re-looking at to see, you know, the specific businesses you're talking about and if there's an adjustment that needs to be made to, you know, to be consistent. Does that sound good?
First, before you do that, let me, let me ask other councilmen, are there any other comments? Just you and Mr. Freeman, Bob, or...
Well, I do want to comment that I believe, Rashad, this is what I brought up, uh, with regard to seeing, uh, and no disrespect to the fire department, but an ambulance parked onto a grassy area next to the football stadium during the Special Olympics, when I went there to judge the Special Olympics. And I'm thinking, well, this is all wet and damp right now because the grass isn't wet, it's not wet. But what if it was? And it doesn't make any difference for whether or not it's Special Olympics or whether it's football game or any other activity that's going on. If an ambulance is needed somewhere or an emergency vehicle is needed somewhere, that it's there pending its need and use, that it needs to be parked on concrete. And it doesn't need to be jumping the curb and sitting on grass because it's important that they can get to the injured person as quick as possible. So, that's what opened the categories, uh, was just to ensure Rashad looked at it and said, yeah, that's right, we're not controlling it well enough for, so to speak, ru, uh, commercial properties. And he and the, uh, I believe he also got Chief Kendrick involved with it and went, yeah, this looks like something that needs to be done. So, I'm the one that started this. Uh, I think, and I'm glad that Rashad looked a little bit deeper into the, and I believe the comments of Mr. Wade was made, are looking even deeper into it, not necessarily the changes that Rashad was going for as a result of my initiating this, but just Jim's good analysis of the rest of the ordinance. So, while we're in there, let's fix it. If we see issues with, uh, same is true of the driveway issue. Uh, you know, I, quite frankly, I have a problem with anything much beyond the apron in, in, uh, non-HOA areas because most of the houses in non-HOA areas have long driveways. And if you're, if you're over an acre, you're gonna have a real long driveway and price concrete now or what it was twenty years ago. It's quite expensive and I can think of several of my neighbors up in Down Barnes Bridge, in fact, I haven't taken account, but I think there's more people on Barnes Bridge that don't have, or they have gravel driveways. Uh, and it fits the environment that we all live in. If they want a concrete driveway, they want to put it in. It's not to say it's okay necessarily everywhere. I don't think of the M streets, we want to have anything other than a permanent driveway because they're all short driveways. And that's the character of a developed area like that. But I think we need to look at that ordinance and not, this isn't good. And we need to look at it a little more holistically with respect to the type of development that it's gonna be around and the character of that particular street, uh, and or group of houses.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Any other comments? Mr. Finch? Your comment?
Yes, uh, so just to clarify, you're gonna take this bag and analyze basically based on the comments we have here because I don't, I wouldn't necessarily say I totally agree with, with all the comments that are made, but I'd like to see some options because not having concrete just beyond an apron, I don't think is, would be why it's supposed to put in an ordinance, even though you say you don't want it in the M streets, but if you say... in an ordinance, even though you say you don't want it in the M Streets, but if you say that, I think we just need to put some real analysis around it, say, how are we gonna control this?
Well, the fifty foot came up, it's an arbitrary number, but during the draft of the UVO, the fire department was contacted and fifty feet seemed appropriate with regard to, wanted to make certain that they had the type of pavement that would be reinforced for their vehicles, emergency services.
So that drove the fifty foot, was to say, at least we can pull in fifty feet, I can start on gravel or whatever we're talking about, just like the plan was made, so we can at least get to a residence, whatever they decide to put after that, but we can't guarantee they're gonna maintain a gravel road, it could be full of puddles. I know one down at the end of Sunview, that was supposed to be a gravel road, we couldn't even drive down it after, after a few weeks. So I think, I think we have to really consider all those things, that's all I'm asking, is that with all this input, there needs to be some, some real thought given back to why we required it, why wasn't in there, I can't think of it just being arbitrary and say, I know costs are high, but that's sometimes the cost of doing business in a public safety. So we have to look at the big picture here.
Yeah, I would comment to that, I understand where you're coming from. I would comment to that, okay, you've got an improved surface that you've got, and a row of trees, you can't get a fire truck, fire truck or ambulance down there now, paved with concrete road. So if you're gonna, if we have to, we're really beginning to open that can of worms now. Because I can think of two specific driveways that if you were going in concrete and currently gravel, you wouldn't be able to get a fire truck down it anyway. Or and/or the, any emergency vehicle, you'd get a squad car down it, but you wouldn't get an ambulance or a fire truck. So it, this thing grows if we're not careful, and that's what we've just done, is made it grow into this huge monster. But when we're, you know, I think that we can take it a piece at a time and work through it. I don't disagree with Ryan at all, it needs to be looked at and analyzed and fixed what we can fix and keep these other things on the back burner and try to fix those as we can move forward and figure out a good way to solve those.
So you've got a tree and junk bodies, because the concrete of this is a separate topic itself.
Well.
That's just a separate topic, right? Completely different.
Well, no, no, if, if you're, if you're trying to concrete it so that you give the emergency vehicles a good way to get down the road, so it doesn't turn into motorbikes, then I can think of two specific properties, one of them is be right behind me, that you can't get a fire truck to the house because of the trees that are growing up over that concrete, or whether it's concrete or whether it's gravel. You won't get the emergency vehicles.
That's a completely different topic.
It's a completely different topic, but it, it falls into the same.
Well, that's code enforcement.
Grashell of, okay, you're putting in concrete, you still can't get a fire truck down it, if you're using that as your purpose for good.
So for, for staff's direction, what is, I guess my, my approach in moving forward, should I look for more exceptions as far as materials and expand that to smaller lots as well as, we have a requirement now that states, you know, all vehicles, et cetera, shall be parked behind the front building line on improved surfaces. So that was going to be a correction, because I know that was the intent for the regulation. If that's not the intent, I can, I can take that and we're gonna allow for other materials, then we can move forward. This is causing an issue with code enforcement.
Yeah.
There has to be some regulation that have them to enforce when they have people calling in saying there's a bunch of vehicles behind the house and they're parked on grass.
Yeah, I, I have a couple of things to bring up here. One, the first thing that I would bring up is that, do we have a problem with it being that two acres is too much and we want it to be smaller than two acres? Or do we have a problem with fifty feet not being enough on two acres? I think we've brought up both of those. Don't know if one of them is actually the point that, or the one that we're really stuck on. And the second off is, being that that's already a part of the UVO, does anyone actually have a problem with cellular reinforced concrete paving being added to it? Because that's kind of what was being brought to our attention, was that they're going to be adding this. We can go back and look at the UVO, the fifty feet, but literally what's in red is what's being changed, and it's only literally one, one different type of substance, right?
And that's what, that's what I agree with. I, I think we only need to be focused right now on what the enhancements are that are in red. And granted, remember Wade brought up some good thoughts about things that weren't being looked at. So I don't think we need to look at those right now, but maybe we need to put them on the list of things that need to be looked at. But right now, I think, I agree, it needs to be only what's in red.
So I had two or three different comments here, right? One, regarding Section E, they brought the, what's the initial, what's the initial? What's council's pressure? Mr. Wade, you want to table it, and you want to take this item as presented?
Well, I'm not for, for stretching out anything that needs to be addressed. As I said in the very first sentence, I don't remember the discussion about this and why we got this ordinance in force tonight. If it was simply about the ambulance parking in football fields, then we went way past that. But I'm not for tabling it because I think there is some discussion items. I think there's some presentation items here that can be corrected. But if there are other items that should be addressed because they were either overlooked or not addressed properly, or maybe I'm wrong, then I think that deserves to be at least addressed. And we can get to that point, and then we can vote yes or no.
And a second, as a separate item?
But voting this so we can approve it as now, that just means we're going to bring it back up again and perhaps without a unanimous revision.
So, looking at it as is, and then possibly at a different time coming back and relooking at Section C of the UVO as it relates to the fifty foot and the two acres. Is that what I'm hearing?
So that's the one, that's the favorite section of the council.
I would, I would, I'm sorry, I would recommend just tabling it, and then if, if council can provide some direction to staff via email, then we can compile that information and revise accordingly, the whole section.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Councilman?
Mayor, I'm just sorry, I'm just sorry. You know, another approach would be to ask for a couple of council members to, you know, serve as somewhat of a subcommittee to work directly with staff so that we can get, you know, some good direction on how you'd like to proceed.
So, so we need to get the input from the council, no matter what, right? So then, if a couple of council members, I'm working with Susan's recommendation, someone has to disfigure, designate, please say so. So what I'm hearing is we table it, all council members, if those who have comments, send in the comments to Susan. And if council, a couple of council members, I'm gonna notify Mr. Wade and Ms. Vigan, is that the right mix out? You know what's what you thought of it? Mr. Bob, you ready to chat?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
I'm good.
All right, with that, can we have a motion to table item number nine?
To a specific day.
Thank you. That may be first meeting in January?
January thirteenth.
What's the date of that?
January thirteenth.
Can I have a motion to table item number nine for the January thirteenth, the first meeting in January meeting?
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Wade, for the second.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Todd, to table item number nine until the meeting of January thirteenth. You don't write the motion, the initial discussions. All in terms of fine, all opposed, motion passed, that's your right. So Mr. Wade and Ms. Vigan, if you could, please support the staff with your comments, and I would also recommend staff to send in the revised UVO ahead of time, at least a couple of things ahead of time if we can, at least early this weekend that your council can look over it. Thank you very much. Council, I'm going to recess the meeting for ten minutes, that you just.
Well, I think she wanna make a presentation.
In the middle, take a recess. Okay, change the plan. I'm gonna invite our state of Australia, Ms. Travis, to come forward, make a special presentation. Good evening, Ms. Travis.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor George and council. I just wanted to say thank you for allowing me a moment to share this special night. Thank you, Chief Hawks, for inviting me and the office tonight. I, I just wanted to make a quick presentation. It's good to be here and to hear your deliberations, and I'm just so excited to have a chance to hear some of the great things that are going on in Sunnyvale. We always support you all. But tonight, I wanted to present you with this calendar as we move into January of 2020. I look forward to working with you and the city. And I wanted to just say, because you are making history, as I did in, in you all giving me the opportunity to serve, the quote that I chose for the calendar that has great pictures from the Capitol is that, it's sincerely from me, and it says, "Living a life of service as so many of you do in law enforcement and our first responders is more than worth it, and in doing so, you just may make history." So I'm so glad to share in tonight's special recognition of you and your swearing in and to present you with this calendar and just look forward to the many years of work that we will get to do together for the great city of Sunnyvale.
Thank you.
One more, one more.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Susan, for directing us on that one. Okay, moving on to discussion and action items, item number ten, discuss council and act upon purchasing twelve portable radios for the Sunnyvale Courtesy Park. Chief Hawks?
Yeah, Mayor and council, this is for the purchase of twelve portable radios. It's not enough for the entire police department or each individual officer to have it right now. And that's mainly due to the fact that it's quite a bit over what the police study budgeted for that, and the reason for that is, the police study budgeted for a single band radio. We need a dual band radio, one so that we can continue to communicate with Dallas County Sheriff's Office, and then for the new system that we'll ultimately be on. And even when we're on that system, we'll still need to be able to communicate with the county because more likely it'll be backing us up still. So that is the reason for the twelve, and that will give four officers on duty, they'll come in and check out those four, and they'll be forecharging, so the next shit that comes on, there'll always be four fresh radios.
So I'm gonna take public comments at this time. Anyone who'd like to come forward and speak to the council, please come forward. So no one's coming forward, so I'm going to cross the public comments. Chief, I have a question for you. Twenty-eight thousand dollars each, right, for the twelve, roughly, what, twenty-three hundred dollars each?
Yeah, they're.
Times twelve is twenty-eight thousand dollars. Where do we, how do we propose, maybe, yeah, sixty-five, fifty-four minus forty-two hundred, right?
Yes, sir.
So two thousand, three hundred times twelve, how do we propose to make up the budget difference?
Well, there's other things that are coming in considerably under budget. For example, we just received our patrol rifles, and we had sixteen hundred and nine dollars budgeted for those, and they came in at five hundred and eighty dollars. Now, we still have to buy optics for those, but it's only a couple hundred dollars more. So we're gonna come in about eight, seven or eight hundred dollars less on those rifles. We're coming in under budget on, on some of the gear and stuff like that, too, and the vehicles, we're still under budget. We're still working on upfitting those vehicles, but we're under budget on those. So I think the bottom line at the end of the year, we're gonna be okay.
And if you recall, when we presented that budget, we said, these are estimates, and we will learn as we go along what these items are going to cost. We're working really closely with Liz to keep track of that, so that when we come to the mid-year budget adjustment, if we need to make adjustment, we'll do so.
Okay. Hopefully, we'll be close to having.
How many radios would be the ideal situation? One for every officer. There's, there's certain circumstances where an officer might need to use his radio on his way home, on his way in, working on an off-duty job and things of that nature.
So you're really short about any radios?
When we're fully staffed, yes, sir.
That's about fifty-six thousand dollars. You know, we knew that these were estimates. We knew that we didn't have any magic signs here. And I know for a fact that we go fifty-six thousand dollars in that budget. I don't want to scrimp on our Sunnyvale Police Department. I mean, they need what they need to operate. So I would encourage the staff to find fifty-six thousand dollars and get the ideal number of radios that we need, so we don't short our first police department by any amount. I know that that is about one day, maybe one and a half days on our budget. We got it in reserves. So I, I can't do anything other than, Mayor, I'd encourage you to help me direct the staff to see if we can find fifty-six thousand dollars to get eight, eight additional radios, so they're fully staffed and fully communicating on day one.
So we definitely want to support the police department, they should be fully equipped. If the chief's coming, I would ask the chief, is the right time what we have, when you're phasing, how long's it gonna take you to phasing these twenty officers?
It's gonna take all the way up until October of 2020 and maybe a little bit after that. We're not getting in a hurry just to put bodies on the street. We're gonna get the best of the best, and we're gonna, we're gonna do our hiring process correctly and fully vet everybody that we hire on this town of Sunnyvale. I will tell you that since we've got this quote, I might defer to Captain Hopkins, some of these costs, it breaks down each radio, the price of the actual hardware's not gonna change, but there might be some cost savings in some of this programming. The Smart Zone, and Captain Hopkins knows a lot more about these things than I do, but he identified some things that, worst-case scenario is what we're asking for tonight, it might come in a little lower.
So Mr. Wade, I fully respect your opinion, continue to support it. With the question, if you have an opportunity to bring it back, then we do it, that's all I have.
Let's just be sure that we don't, we remember that we're short radios.
I'm supposed to make a minus.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, we can do this in two waves. You know, we can go ahead and purchase them now, but we, I think kind of our urgency to get them going is.
Our urgency right now is to get about five. So if we get twelve now, we should be good for like, like Tammy Anderson said, for the first wave, first, next six months.
But the bottom line is, it all comes out of 2020, or out of this current budget. So if we do twelve now or twenty now, it's still, we still have to find money for them.
Yes, sir.
And, but I, I agree with phasing in at the same time, I mean, but the bottom line is, it's still fifty-six thousand dollars that comes out of this budget, we have to find money.
Council, any additional questions or discussions on this topic? So what I'm hearing is that you'll bring back additional, you're gonna be able to do it.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wade, agree with that?
Sure.
Okay, council.
Although, you know, the important thing is, is we have a bid, that we could probably increase to twenty radios. We go buy eight next summer, they may not be the same price.
So let's ask the question, it's time, what do you, so what is your recommendation?
Yeah, these prices are on the Houston-Gallaston contract.
So is it beneficial to go buy now, financially?
I would think so, I would think so, because the next item on the, is another equipment issue, and it's gonna have a price increase, as we want to, so. I don't know if the radios increase any, they do? I don't know when that is, but everything's subject to.
So is it beneficial to go buy now financially?
I would think so. I would think so because the next item on the, is another equipment issue in that it's going to have a price increase staying where we want to. I don't know if the radios increase any. They do? I don't know when that is, but everything's subject to.
So is there any recommendations?
I would hate to think that we bought all the uniforms, we bought all the vehicles. We're obviously buying uniforms. We bought the guns. We're buying the tasers and we shorted them on communications because we didn't want to spend $56,000 more dollars.
Yeah, for more than happy to buy them all right now. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Counsel, make a motion, please.
I move that you purchase the, the 12 radios that are in this presentation tonight and you explore increasing that immediately, 20 radios that are fully equipped and that is subject to a successful funding out of our current budget.
Second, a motion made by Mr. Wade and second by Mr. Clark. Are there additional questions or discussions?
Do we have to do a budget amendment in reference to this? Will we have to do a budget amendment to have to have a hearing on that?
I don't believe so because I think this is coming out of capital. Is that right, Liz? So the money is all.
This is, this is part of your capital improvement portion of your police department, which is being financed with tax notes. So when you say the current year budget, you're actually looking at those tax notes and those tax notes roll into the next year until you have all of those capital assets acquired and paid for.
So the answer is no? Mr. Finch's question?
I think the answer is no.
No. The answer's no because you've already appropriated it within that tax note. When you put the tax notes out there, you were very specific in your verbiage to what that would be used for, and that is for the capital assets to stand up your police department.
Are there additional discussions on this topic?
Yes, Mayor, I need to clarify that the intent of the motion is to authorize the purchase of 20 radios.
Yeah, I'm going to state that, that's my understanding.
Okay.
And that's exactly what I said.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the motion, motion made? Motion made by Mr. Wade to authorize purchase of 20 radios for the Sunnyvale Police Department and motion second by Mr. Clark. Have you heard the motion? All in terms of signify? All opposed? Motion passed, six zero.
Thank you, Ms. Vega.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 11, to discuss, consider and act upon purchasing 22 tasers through cross-force law enforcement for the Sunnyvale Police.
Mayor and Council, this is.
Chief Hox?
Yes, yes, sir. For 22 X2 model tasers and four-year warranties and the holsters and the data ports and cartridges and training cartridges for the first year, an amount of 43, 4, 4, 5, 4.
Okay, with the public comments on this topic, if anyone from the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council, please do so. No one is coming forward, so I'm going to cross the public comments. Counsel, are there additional discussions? Are there any questions or comments on this topic?
Are we going to two for extra? Does that why we get 22 instead of like 22 radios?
Yeah, in anticipation of maybe school resource officers down the line and sometimes they do break, so we'll have one extra if someone.
Just want to make sure we didn't need 22 radios.
Okay, are there additional questions, discussions on this topic? Okay, if not, a motion to speculate on what it is. Motion to prove, number 11. Motion made by Mr. Clark to prove item number 11, as I said, that's a second. Second by Mr. Feman. Have you heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? All in terms of signify? All opposed? Motion passed, six zero. Moving on to the patrol, Mayor and Council request for future staff updates on the night. Counsel?
Mayor, I just want to confirm one thing. Will we need more for that brief? Where's that next Tuesday?
It's next Tuesday, sir. It's on the 17th.
Mr. Wade?
Is there any update on the trip road improvements?
No, sir. Not, not for lack of trying, sir.
And I just want to say, I won't be here on the 17th. I've got my granddaughter or son coming.
And that is? Also will be here on the 17th. Not for lack of trying, trip road, was that supposed to mean?
So.
I can't respond. We can't have a conversation, but I'll be happy to provide further. It's also on your project matrix and it has an update and I can put it on Next Agenda and give a public presentation on that if that would please you, sir.
I am quite concerned that there's going to be a major accident on 100 block of trip road. I've already seen two near ones because of losing control, because of the dips in the road or the cracks in the road. One's worked off of the trip road over the grass. The other one, almost, not almost, did cross the center line because he overcorrected. And it's getting worse day by day.
We will have an update on the Next Agenda, sir.
Are there additional discussions? If not, we have one, one more to the final item. Can I have a motion to adjourn the regular town council meeting for December 11?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion made by Mr. Feman to adjourn the council meeting. The second, second by Mr. Finch. Have you heard the motion? All in terms of signify?
Merry Christmas.
All opposed? Count time is 8:23. The regular session needs to adjourn. Mr. Wade said that, again, Merry Christmas to everyone.